Lord's Prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Our Father.
Who art in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever and ever. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the agenda and the addendum?
Motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second. Mike.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yep.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to public participation, Brookdale Elementary.
Alright, so we're wrapping down, we're getting really close to the end of school year. Tomorrow is our last full day of testing, which I'm super excited about. It was kind of a, like, we had to go back and remember how to do it because it's been two years since we've done testing, and it's actually went really smooth and I'm super excited. We just have a few oddities this year with students being in quarantine. We have to, like, plan for getting theirs made up because the states extended their window, so we need to go back and actually catch those kids as long as they're back in time. So that's a new challenge, but it's pretty easy because we don't have a lot of kids that are even have that situation. This is autism month, so we, on Thursdays, have been wearing our autism shirts. One of our third grade students actually read a book to some of his other classmates, trying to just make it awareness of what autism is and how it affects him as a student and how they can help him in the classroom. So it was, it was really awesome, he did that today, and I think the kids really enjoyed it. A lot of year-end things coming up, they're gonna be a little different, but a lot of fun for the kids, and we're trying to make it as normal as we can, and still fun. That's it.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna skip down to Seacrest Elementary.
We had our STEM night on March twenty-fifth, and that was a huge success. We had, we gave every student in our school a STEM packet, and then we had our STEM online virtual night in the evening. We conducted experiments and we drew for prizes, and then we challenged the students to create their in-stem project on their day off the next day, which was a remote learning day. So I think it looked very well, it was very well received, and we had some students that participated in the challenge as well. Our March IXL challenge was a big success as well. We had sixty percent completion rate, successfully completing, and that was the biggest completion rate we'd had for the year. So it was a pajama party with a reward, and you wouldn't think that would be a big deal, but they really enjoyed it. So that was something that we'll have to remember for next year, it was a big success. We are also working on testing for language arts and math for the end-of-year benchmark, and we're planning some creative options for our awards day and for some outdoor activities for STEM and cooperative learning. But we're winding down as well and looking for a successful end of the year.
Okay. Metta Burke Middle School, Mr. Ray.
We are, we've just begun our testing this week, ELA is not complete. We have math next week on Tuesday, Wednesday, then eighth grade science week after. Also, that following week, sixth grade talented gift and magnetic testing is gonna happen. And we'll be glad to get through that process. It's been nice to have some of the virtual kids coming back and getting to see them. They haven't been out here to head for testing, it was real nice to see all thirty of them came back. And then we're gonna get to springtime at the middle school, which is gonna be similar, but a little more of it. Usually we tell the teachers, you can go out and play kickball once in a while when it's nice, you know, make sure we're in the classroom. You know, this has been such a crazy year, and with all the remote stuff and all the, I mean, four days a week to try to get all the standards in, there's gonna be a lot of kickball, and there's gonna be a lot of badminton, and there's gonna be a lot of field days and track days, and you know what? We may do more important education during that time than we've done all year for these kids, because we just need to have a good time with our kids for a few weeks and let them enjoy the end of the year. We are gonna welcome over the fifth grade on May fourteenth, so they can tour the sixth grade rooms, get demonstration from the band, they get to see where they're gonna eat and everything, kinda get to know the building and the teachers. Our testing reward day, the teacher set up a rubric as far as effort on the test, time and picking notes and certain things they want them to do. And that's a day of games, movies, a video game room, some volleyball, and a very highly contested Metta Burke Middle School cornhole championship, which last year was sixty-two teams in a bracket, final four right here, I did go down in the final four. And then for round out the year, our awards day is on May twenty-fourth. Due to restrictions with the crowd size, instead of telling all the kids they can only bring one person, or in case of sixth and seventh grade, half a person. Those aren't gonna be virtual this year, hopefully we'll be back to more than all of them next year. That's at eight-thirty in the morning for the sixth and seventh grade, and the eight-fifty, seven at nine-thirty. They will be live streamed, and we will post the video later on social media so parents can watch it if they're leisurely, they can't during the morning, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ray is going to do the high school and the athletic administrators report.
Yep, just like the other buildings, we're currently in the middle of administering a state test. We had three days of testing last week, we've tested all of this week, and we have two days next week, and then the last three days next week we make up, so it'll be exciting at the end of next week. And our counselors have done a fantastic job preparing for that. Obviously, like Shelley said, not doing it last year, kinda had to remind herself how to do it because there's a lot that goes into testing, and it's been really, really smooth. We have four students tomorrow testing at Belmont College, and they're testing to earn their credentials in the STNA program. Those students have been attending Belmont College once a week since October to learn the skills to pass the test, which is also a new pathway for graduation. And then in two weeks, I believe, we have four students taking the welding test down there to get certified. So that's something we implemented this year at the high school. We boss them down on Mondays, and there's been a few kids that have taken advantage of that. It's fantastic for those kids to get those credentials. We're getting toward the ends of scholarship season, and the counselor's been working hard on that. We're actually gonna have a virtual academic award ceremony. That is where the winners of the scholarships will be announced, and that is scheduled to be posted on May seventeenth. So it's kind of exciting, because we hand out a ton of money in scholarships every year. The virtual way is kinda neat because kids can all, and parents and whoever, can all tune into that when it gets posted and find out how much money they actually received. And then beginning May third, beginning May third on our district's social media sites, we'll be doing a senior spotlight where multiple seniors will be recognized every day. And that will begin, like I said, on May third to run clear up the graduation deck. So it would be kinda neat because we get a highlight of seniors and what they're interested in and what they're going to be doing after high school. Some upcoming events, this time of year's really busy for the high school. We have cabaret that'll take place on Friday, May seventh, and Saturday, May eighth, at seven-thirty in the high school auditorium. We have the FFA petting zoo on Thursday, May thirteenth, and Friday, May fourteenth during the school day, and that takes place in our FFA department. Prom is as normalized as it possibly can be this year, which is nice for the kids. That'll take place on Saturday, May fifteenth at eight o'clock at Pritchard Luff, Pritchard Lufflin Center. And then graduation is scheduled for Friday, May twenty-first, and that'll be at seven o'clock in the high school gym. So that's what's going on at the high school. As far as athletics goes, it's kind of interesting this year with athletics because, you know, your sophomores who were maybe sprinkled in there a little bit playing varsity and JVs as sophomores, all of a sudden they're your senior leaders, and they lost, you know, a whole year last year without having spring. So expectations coming into the season were unknown for a lot of teams. But we're having a good spring so far. Our varsity baseball record, this is coming in tonight, I haven't got any results yet from tonight, but our varsity baseball record coming in tonight was ten and two overall, seven and one in the NBL. We currently sit first in the league. Varsity softball record was seven and seven overall, five and four in the NBL, and I'm not sure where we stand in the small school, but we definitely have an opportunity if we can win more of our NBL games to win that small school division. Varsity track's been doing extremely well with boys and girls, the team's placed in multiple events. This past weekend, our boys placed first at the Johnstown Invite. We also have several boys and girls who are getting really, really close to breaking school records in certain events. So spring's doing very well. Believe it or not, tournament drawing for softball is next Su, next Sunday, and then baseball is the following Sunday, so tournament time for, for spring sports is already here. And then I do wanna give the board a shout-out, and here's why. I had a vision of what I wanted the baseball and softball complex to look like, and it got completed in fall of two thousand nineteen. Well, obviously, last year we didn't have spring sports, so a lot of people didn't get to see the complex. I mean, so this is really the first season that a lot of people have seen our baseball softball complex. And every night I'm down there, we got games every night, I get compliments from our M fans, but from visiting fans too, because, you know, people don't have to lift up their feet in the front row of the bleachers and stuff. So obviously, without your guys' support and the finances that went toward that project, we wouldn't have been able to make it happen. But if you haven't been down on the baseball softball field, it's beautiful. We've done a lot of changes down there, and it's, it's extremely nice, not only for, for our kids, but for community members and opposing teams and everybody, so thanks for that.
Real quick on graduation, and you can run this if you want. Next week I'm gonna put out an all-call. We're gonna give each student four tickets at the end of next week. I tried to wait as long as I could, because once they have them, I mean, that's our only way in. I'm gonna give each graduate and senior four tickets that they can bring family in with, and that mixed with staff will be in capacity. But like I said, we've kinda drugged it on as long as we could. I've also been kinda hooping the governor, we've come out with the guidance that, you know, we haven't gotten yet, and I could give them more than four, but we're gonna start with four, if something changes in the meantime, we can expand, we will.
Okay. Curriculum, Mr. Catton. I'll go back to.
Okay. So we've been working with our literacy team, mostly trying to develop the framework for our Orton Gillingham that our teachers have been trained in over the last few years in our Higerty program. So our core team has been working on developing the framework for that. So we've started with intensely developing that K-five. We're also looking at the six, twelve programming. Our fourth, fifth, and middle school and high school have an opportunity to get the intermediate training here at the end of the year, which will be that next step in our literacy training. And then we will be continuing that in the fall for those who can't do it at the end of this year. Literacy team's been meeting every week, K-five, to develop this curriculum. And it's, it's a framework where they're putting in the pieces that have been research-based to ensure that every kid is being offered the same in the five pillars of reading, with vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension, phonemic awareness, and phonics. So we're really trying to make sure that's streamlined and is following what the state is aligning for our curriculum. We've also been investigating math and seeing what we need to do to improve our math processes. And we'll be bringing in Kai Davis from the Skingham University to start working with our staff members and developing the framework for our math programming. So we're developing a core team right now, and that core team is being trained in that. And Kai is also gonna start working with training some of our elementary staff, and she'll be working with us over the next couple of years to make that solid. So that's gonna be one of our biggest focuses next year, is the K-five math curriculum, developing that, planning that, and then we'll start that implementation process. So it is a phase, it takes time, and we'll move our way up through. We've also been really looking at assessments. We test a lot. As you heard, everybody around here is talking about testing. Some of that's mandatory through the state, so we wanna make sure that when we are giving assessments, they're assessments that we're using the data properly for. So they're informing our instruction and making sure that we're not just doing it to do it, that we're using that data to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. So we've really taken a look, taken a look at our assessments to decide what are we doing? Are we doing it at the right time and the right place? So we've been going through a lot of training on assessments and what that looks like, so that we're making sure that the assessments we use, we use the data wisely, and we use it to improve what we're doing in our instruction. So that's an ongoing discussion, DLT's been working on that, our district leadership team, and we've made some decisions on some changes to make for next year. So we're testing smarter, not more. That's been one of the biggest focuses for that. We're doing a lot with finishing up title funding for the year and then getting started. We've had all of our one-needs assessments done by our buildings. I'm getting ready to do that for the district so that we can get our planning for title for next year. And we've also been looking at ESAR funding, which is all the federal funding that's been coming down from all the stimulus, and how to use that most effectively to impact our students with positive outcomes. So those are just a few of the things we've been doing in curriculum.
Thank you. Gilley told me to make you last, you're last.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize I was late, but I know everybody's talking about testing, and although the only state testing we do is the gifted testing that we did a couple weeks ago, but we're not doing state testing, we do an awful lot of testing in our building because we have already been testing, it seems like, for a month, and we will test right up in prob, probably until the end of May, because we do a lot of, you know, testing through OG and the other programs we have. We have, you know, and basically, we're trying to get all of our kids to grade level, which is probably not going to happen, but most of them are very, very close. It's a high percentage of kids that we do have at or above grade level at this point, so I'm glad to see that. One of the things that teachers are really working on, second grade is really working on the Wax Museum, that's the big thing coming up. The kids do work on those projects for probably the whole, a good part of the nine weeks, the last nine weeks. And it also involves parents and their help, and most parents really get involved with it. Sometimes over-the-top involved, but it's okay, it does bring families together. So we've got that going on, and that's going to be virtual this year. We also, other than testing, which is keeping us busy, we have a whole of the other end-of-year things to wrap up. Evaluations are wrapping up for teachers and everyone else. We are, we also are looking forward to, last year, our home and school, before everybody was gone, they, it was before COVID, they gave us a lot of money so that everybody could take a field trip to Razors. And we, we didn't get it done last year because of COVID. So this year, everybody's looking forward to that, teachers are scheduling that, and they're going on walking field trips so that we don't have to tie up buses right now when there's really, there's, you know, not enough drivers to get them in and out. So basically, we're starting to look to next year, and how are we kicking things off next year? And what are we doing? So we're always looking ahead. And so we have a lot of work to do, but, and as usual, one thing COVID hasn't changed, everything still snowballs at the end of the year, and happens, the end of the year comes much faster than you thought it was going to. So other than that, just daily business, I guess.
Okay, thank you. We had had a request to put Scooter on the agenda, but I think that's when he was gonna announce he was leaving, and that's already been done. But I would like to take this time to thank him for the time he has spent here. He's done an excellent job, I don't think we can ask anyone else to do any better than what Scooter did. Great coach, great person, so I wanna thank him. And, yeah, and, you know, and for personal reasons, closer to home, a lot of reasons why he left, but he didn't leave the cupboard empty, we have an all-stater coming back, we have some other kids coming back. You know, the program will be fine, but I just wanted to say thank you to him and for what he's done with the district.
Right, and, and working at the district one day a week, you know, at Metta Burke, you know, I see the care and compassion that he has for the kids, and he and I have worked closely with a couple of the kids, and Mr. Wheeler as well, and, and, you know, it's, it's just, you know, it's a big loss to us, but I'm happy for him that he can go and, and, you know, be closer to home and, you know, do what he needs to do, so.
Okay. Jason, I don't know how to pronounce your last name.
That's okay, very few do.
I'll admit it right up front.
I got some hands here before you guys, real quick. My name is Jason Emch. I am owner and president of Surgeon Construction here in town. I'm also affiliated and owner of another company called Eagle Three Logistics. I talked to John Yerick the other day, and I just wanted to approach the board with a concept and an idea of kinda what we're doing. That first page, if you kinda orient that a little bit, to the right of that site plan right there would be two oh nine, and at the bottom, I don't know how you talk to these masks. At the bottom would be the old Cogles building, if you're familiar with that. And then just adjacent to that is the empty lot that's right there on the other side of Whittaker Avenue. We actually own that lot, and we actually own the old Cogles building. We're building, you might have seen some dirt already start moving, we're actually going to fifty thousand square foot warehouse. So what Eagle Three Logistics does, it is a warehousing company, but it's also a logistics company. So we load, unload trucks, keep inventory, things like that for various companies inside Cambridge area. We've actually started construction on the fifty thousand, and that's actually already leased. So we're real happy about that. As things advance, things move forward, we're looking into the future. If you kinda look at that back page, of course, because our neighbors do eyeball the back lot that is actually yours. In the future, maybe not tomorrow or the next day, we're considering further expansion, and we wanted to kinda just bring it to the board that we'd be interested in purchasing that property. So if you see the red outline, that's what we currently own, and then the green line is what we're interested in. Not to say that we're not interested in all the property there, but right now, that would be the key focal point that we're interested in. This is, by no means are we coming today with an offer or saying we want this right away. We wanted to kinda float this idea and concept out to you guys and see what your thoughts were. There's some work that would need to be done to that site, and before I start budgeting those things and looking at how to do it, kinda wanna see if Steve's that, if it's something we can kinda do, so. And the thought for that, or the process for that would be another warehouse, and then we would be joining those properties, actually coming across that drainage and areas, and actually joining those for more warehousing, so. Wonder if I'd that concept out to you guys? I don't think that it's for sale, if it is for sale, we're certainly interested. If it is in the future, we'd certainly like to approach you guys, everybody's talking again.
So what you're, not proposing, but what you're looking at right now is the area that's circled in green?
Yes.
Which is the soccer fields back behind Cogles? When we discuss this, would, take it under consideration? But would you be interested in the whole property?
Yes, we would.
Okay, so if we talk about it, we can give that right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, we will take that under consideration.
All right. With that, I'm gonna let you guys get back to it, someone's gonna wear a mask anymore. I do wanna say, it's refreshing to see a board that actually talks at the beginning and before a meeting, very nice to see. That, to me, is a sign of a healthy district, so I've been in other boards where it didn't go that way, so it's very nice to see it.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Jason, I really appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the curators' report.
Well, Molly and I sat in a very exciting live board meeting, I guess you would call it. OFCC approved us today for our funding. You've probably seen it all over social media and stuff already, so, I mean, that was great, very exciting, six years waiting on it, but it's done. The other thing I did want to discuss is we were in a meeting yesterday, a Zoom call with our project manager for the building project. After that, we stayed on with a couple of construction managers, well, attorneys, that we got to talk to about DESAR funding and the student activity building, and we got more of a piece in mind about how we can use the funding for that and more of a protection because they would be involved also. So like, if audit or anyone questioned it, they would also show how it's allowable. So that was good news, especially since we do have approving the advertising for the architect on there tonight. So with that, I have approval of the minutes from March eleventh, approval of the financial report for March, approve of advertising, a request for qualifications for architectural services as presented. This is for the student activity building, and again, we're starting that process, we'll lock in the building project interest rate and stuff before we completely move forward. I mean, this would just be step one, they would still have to pin it out, which would take your guys' approval. Approved the agreement for internet service between Ohio Mid Eastern Regional, well, Omerisa as presented. Then the next three are just resolutions that our bond council sent for the building project, just some stuff that has to be done to get the financial side rolling. Then approve the resolution from Ohio Auditor of State as presented. This is just our LGS contract that we approve every year. They come in, they help do the gap reporting before audit comes in.
Okay, do I have a motion for items A through H?
Motion here.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on any of the items? Roll call.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes.
Are there any reports under, under standing committees that anybody has? Audit has been finished, correct?
Yes.
Audit's been finished?
I would like to mention that we are going through with the timber project. It was one of those situations where I didn't just make the decision, you know, I talked, the forester called, and so Jeff knows, and you may have already heard, we were kinda putting it on hold because of the situation with the field and things down there, that they're gonna be able to come in and out on adjacent property. So it won't affect, they're gonna come out on Mr. Clewell. All the equipment will come in, and all the equipment will go out on him. So that won't affect us whatsoever as far as anything. Now, I won't say there wouldn't be somebody maybe parked up there to go in and bid on the timber, look at the timber, but it won't affect anything, you know, as far as, you know, we all agreed that we would sell it, and that was just kinda, we kinda put it on back, just, you know, just briefly because of the situation with building the school. Well, you know, it was one of those situations where I was concerned with, you know, the sports and stuff, you know, we don't wanna have timber, logging trucks coming in, so it was all taken care of. So I spoke to Candy, I talked to Dennis, and, you know, we all agreed it should be timbered. Once we knew we didn't have to come in and out on us, it was a no-brainer. So it should all be handled. Hopefully Candy just gets a check at some point now, the forester has his part done, and it'll be beneficial to the district, you know, getting that money, so. It might even, you know, be a situation where we don't hear anything till she gets a check now, so. Just so you guys know. Yeah. I just wanted to mention it so everybody's on the same page.
I'd like to mention that Ben and I met with Dana Brown and the commander from Cambridge in Byzville last week. And Dana's already raised nearly two thousand dollars for our signs and the flag pole and a giant flag to rival the football stadiums. And the local BFWs are all pretty interested in helping out. Now we just need graphic design.
Okay. Mike, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, the student board members. One of the problems when you have very involved kids is that the kids are very involved. We're finding, we're getting a problem getting them here because they're involved in extracurricular activities after school. So Mr. Detrow and I discussed them. We're gonna kinda put this on hold until the fall, so that the students will have an entire year of serving on the board because it's been one thing after another with COVID and things like that. This doesn't take away from their membership, though. I mean, the seniors can still put on their college apps that they were member, you know, that's, none of that's gonna change. The other thing that's changing is that with, as involved as they are, we've got maybe one more school board meeting while they're in school, it's just not feasible to have them come here. So we'll learn more over the summer, figure more things out. Rusty Roberts, who started, originally started this in Cambridge, has contacted me, given me a lot of information. He said that he's available to come and talk to the board if we want him to. So I'm throwing that out there, you know, we'll discuss that. And also, under Mideast, I attend the Mideast board meetings, second Monday of every month, split between Zangeville and Buffalo. Right now, the big push at Mideast is their building projects. They're building like we're going to be building. They're adding a lot of new construction, new programs. And so they are, you know, a majority of our meetings are that and just, you know, how we can get things done through the COVID because, you know, a lot of their stuff is hands-on, and, you know, it's made it tough, but, so. That's my report for the Legislative Student Achievement and Mideast.
Okay. As far as I know, it's no old business. And we'll go to superintendent's report. Brad, do you wanna read that?
Yeah, I'll just read the first paragraph and then we'll go from there. It is recommended by a local superintendent and nominated by the Educational Service Center Superintendent, Randy Lucas, that the mentioned personnel be employed for the term indic- Randy Lucas, that the mentioned personnel be employed for the term indicated and at the existing salary schedule pending certification where applicable, a BCI background check. That would be A through N as a Nancy.
Okay, A through N. Do I have a motion to accept A through N?
I'll do it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on any of the items? Role call.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Ear?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
And then we will do separately O, which is the, Mr. Devon, Devon Detrow for his contract for the, his high school principal. That's a three-year term. Twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school year effective eight, one, twenty-one.
Do I have a motion for item O?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
No, second, sorry.
It doesn't matter.
Discussion. Role call.
Actually, I'd like to, I don't have anything to discuss other than I wanna commend you for your help with the situation as interim superintendent because I know it's a lot of extra and I know a lot of times you don't hear positives in your position and I just wanted to tell you thanks because you're, you're really helping the district out, doing what you do.
And Mr. Wheeler, I'd like to congratulate you on another three years, you do a wonderful job. And that's a tough position, you're a great athletic director and to handle the principal job at the same time.
You haven't voted on it yet.
Thank goodness he's a.
Yeah, you did, okay. That's right, we're on, we're on that one.
Thank goodness he's a workaholic.
Item O, do I have a motion? Do I have that? Role call.
Mr. Ear?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
I'm stating.
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Okay, I have a correspondence, I have a thank you note here. It's kind of, they said it's kind of late, it's for the Christmas program. Everyone worked really hard and said, I know it's late, but I wanted to say a big thank you for presents, clothes, boots, coats, shoes. Also for gift to Bob Evans, which we did a month ago. The children really enjoyed it, God bless all of you. Mrs. Amy Miles, Mike's, Mrs. Amy Mike's and grandchildren. And we also had a thank you from the post-wait family. So I wanted to read that. There aren't any informational items that I know of. I will take a motion to go into executive session to consider matters required to be kept confidential by law or regulations to state statutes.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Role call.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Ear?
Yes.
The next board meeting will be May twenty-seventh at six-thirty tentatively. There will be no action taken after executive session.
Real quick, JP Rayn, I have a contract tonight too and he does a fantastic job.
I know, there's a lot on there. Yeah, there's a lot on.
We appreciate you too, Sarah. Sarah's on there too. Hi, for your honor.
Thank you, everybody.